Yeah, the same thing, guys, start first.
But that's really good stuff.
All right, we're all set.
Oh, yeah. I provided my added value.
Yes, you're right, you're dispatched.
All right. So, all of us meeting to order, it is seven oh seven. Um, so as I mentioned in my email, um, we got some other, we have some larger stuff to discuss, so we'll try to keep the updates to a minimum. Just call out anything that's particular that we need to discuss or decide on. Keep it, keep it brief if we can. So, uh, motion to drop the agenda?
Make a motion to drop the agenda.
All right, all right, thank you. On favor? Okay, and then, uh, the June minutes, any, uh, motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
All right, you guys are well. Any comments, questions, changes? All right, all in favor? Moving right along. Um, so, um, Kim, you want to give highlights of your director's report?
Sure. Um, we'll have the program set up for the next couple, the next month and a half. Let's see, we had a great summer reading kickoff, we had thirty-six people in this little room doing, looking at Birds of Prey, which was wonderful. Um, and our firefighter storytime, which happened yesterday, was also wonderful. We had twenty-four kids here with fifteen adults, two volunteers, and five firefighters.
And a dog.
And a dog, I should have put the dalmatian in there, too. Um, you can see our circulation statistics are actually, they're, they're kind of, they're not going to be the same as they were last year because of, of the, expedition, sorry. Um, but our numbers also have gone up in terms of, if you look at from twenty-four and twenty-two, so we're still, we're still going up in terms of our visits. And we did add another, oh, a couple more people to our, um, cardholders, which is wonderful. So we have, uh, year-to-date, thirty-two new adults, three out of system, adults, and ten kids. And June was a very quiet month in terms of collection development because I was really busy with everything else that we were doing, so I really only added one fic- adult fiction and five BBDs. So, uh, let's see, so, um, da-da-da-da-da, what can I tell you guys? Uh, summer camp is doing really well, it's up and running, they have sixty-four kids registered. They have sixty-four, yep. And they have a lot of kids coming every day, so, and I have, from what I've heard, it's running really smoothly and everybody seems to be having a great time and everything's working well up at the fire hall. So, that's a really, really good thing. Um, one of the things that, um, I'm trying to work on, um, the tablets that we had, uh, approved and, and started up with, they are not working. They don't work in certain areas of Steventown. I gave it to a patron who needed it, and, um, he went home to, um, Chuckleberry, and it didn't work. He came back an hour later, said, "We don't have connections," so I took it home. I also didn't get a connection at my house, didn't get connection, I took a little tour around Steventown, and drove and stopped and drove and stopped. So, um, I've got to call out to, um, the people who gave us the tablets, and we're gonna hope, we'll see if it can be resolved. If it can't be resolved, we're nixing the program, because there's no reason why we would be paying for T-Mobile if most of our patrons can't use it. Um, and it's spotty even here sometimes, too, like, there will be times when a- Yeah, yeah, so it's, you know, it'll start chiming on me, and I'm like, what the hell's going on? We've got-
Yeah, pretty much.
I bet AT&T, it seems, works pretty well.
I lost it during the storm.
Yeah.
And I was just, I don't-
My, my house, it depends what room I'm in, but-
Um, let's see, you spoke to Paul Mays about the next steps for the children's renovation. It appears that we're not going to be hearing from BLD until probably August or September. Um, after we get the letter with the award amount, the way it typically works is after you get the letter with the award amount, we'll set up a committee meeting with Paul to go over the specifics of the project. Then he comes, takes a couple of months to actually make up the actual plans, and, um, then we would start bidding in, like, spring, summer. We can try and do it quicker if we want to, which would be a decision for the board. If we don't have the letter in hand, we can still hire him to do the work, do it early, and just say, "Well, we're crossing our fingers that we're gonna actually get the, the grant money." And then, after we get the grant money, we can pay him back, or we pay it out of our pocket, and just, like I said, cross your fingers, hope that everything works. Um, that way, we could then get working and hopefully get, um, construction started sometime in the winter, because it is a winter project, or it's an indoor project, we might have better results. So, we have to decide, do we want to, like, get the ball rolling, like, now, or wait until we have that letter in hand from BLD? So that's, that's gonna be a big-
Why don't we speak to our friends? Yeah, historically, if this ever, this is no risk, I mean, I don't perceive that there's any real level of a risk. It's really just a question of waiting. And if Tim, the other folks on the services committee, I think, confirm that, then I think we should move forward. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think it's an issue.
The only thing I was wondering, is there a reason that they pushed that, uh, actual notifications?
I don't know.
That's what raises a flag or something, but-
I, I don't know, but, I mean, the money is in the budget, because it's from last year's budget anyway, so it's not like it's gonna go away, it's still there, so it doesn't, I don't know. So, um, I can call Paul on Mon- um, I'm not here tomorrow, but I can call him on Monday and, um, uh, see what, or not call Paul, call UHL, and ask them what they, what they have for recommendations. And then I can send out an email to everybody, and if you want to start earlier, then we might want to start before that August meeting if we decide to go for it.
Yeah. I mean, I think if we feel like there's no risk, it seems like people feel comfortable that we can afford early without the actual letter.
He's Richard, you seem.
That much money, I'm a little-
So he's, he said his, um, his, his fees would be between ten and twelve thousand, is what we would be looking for. He's the architect, yeah, yep, yep, and then project manager.
So we actually have the money from, uh, Jody's mother that could go toward that, if we didn't come back to pay, we'd be, we could have a paddle on the beach, so.
We do, we also have special projects' money set aside. And I mean, it's not like if we have him do the work, we're not gonna use it, like, if we don't get the work this, ki- if we don't get the grant this year, we're gonna try for it again next year, you know, but, again, it's, it's a risk, so. Okay.
I would just say, it's, 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 since when?
Paul is saying he didn't, Paul said he couldn't remember a time when someone hasn't gotten the money that they were expecting, but-
Well, I mean, it's, just, if we recall the process, the process is, you make your application, recommendations made, it's sent over, uh, to SED, SEDX, I mean, basically, what is there that would result in a different result? They've already passed on it, they've got the money, it's been allocated, and it's a question of dispersment.
Right.
So it's just mystery.
Who knows?
I mean, that, that happens, people go along, certainly, they don't let it fall.
Well, I can give upper hats and a call, actually, I might even be able to do it from the road tomorrow, um, depending on where I'm at. Yeah, let's- No, we're heading down to New York, April, I'm going for a college visit, so. I know. Uh, he's going to look at Pace tomorrow. Pace, and then on Tuesday, we're gonna see Fordham. No, they're, they're, no, it's their, um, it's next to Julian, their campus next to Julian.
Oh, yeah, that's nice.
Yeah, very nice, right on, right in, um, in center. Um, okay, so I get, I'll get that going.
Yeah, I think the thing is, um, it would, I, I still even wonder if we get started, still, with how challenging it's gonna be to get-
Get people to do it.
Right, yeah, so, whether, whether it actually gets us to work them in the winter.
Doesn't, yeah, it doesn't guarantee anything, that's what it works. So, it's so hard to get people to do all of the, you know, to get bids, but maybe because it is a room and it's a bigger project, people will be more excited to help out with that. Than a door.
Kim, just work it in.
Yeah, we're moving to, we're moving. Um, the other thing, um, so, North, so our, I called, finally talked to North, I don't know if it's about noon, but we've had an extra printer, photo-copier in the front, on the front desk, about a year now without it working, and when I called North Coast, she's like, "I didn't even know you had that machine." They had no idea that we still had this machine sitting in our, in North Bay, and so, things got pretty out of hand over there with people leaving and people not doing their jobs, and so, this is just, we have to decide, then, our lease is up on this machine, I mean, we're still paying the lease because we still have it. Um, we pay forty dollars a month for the lease, and then the service contract is, um, one cent per black and white copy, six cents for color, and that includes everything that, like, the toner, and the, the only thing it doesn't do is paper, so parts, labor, everything. This new machine is the next, it's like the upgrade, what we have, and we, what we have works really well. Um, it is going up to seventy dollars a month, instead of the forty, so it's a bit of a change, but it looks like it's the best, it will be an extra three sixty a year. So, um, I think that- Oh, a lot, thou- tens of thousands.
Oh, it's really-
Yes, we tried, actually, that's what happened, is that the Sharp that we had was something, they're like, "I don't know why you guys have this, it's just more for a home office." And we were going through ink like crazy, you know, it was, and, yeah, so, we don't pay for ink, we pay for copies themselves, but still, it was, it was just not, not something that-
It had a lot of other issue, like it-
Oh, yeah.
It didn't perform. You know, you said the one we have now, actually, is-
It's a good machine, yeah.
Could, could we just go with a replacement of that one at, at the forty dollars, or?
No, no, yeah, yeah.
And the upgrade has the wireless, right?
Yes.
The other one, too, which is very cute, because everybody's now on their phone.
Yeah, right now, what we do is, if they have something on their phone, they email it to the staff, and staff then print it out for them. Um, and she did, I did talk, or sent an email to make sure that it did have the wireless capabilities. So there's, like, three different ways, we could even have an app that people can use, so, yeah. So if everyone's okay with that, I would like to get moving on that one, too, to get a new machine here, so.
I think it's one of the services that it's, that people do with a power line, and bring different people into the library, so adding something that is library-related.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, you get, we get nervous when it doesn't work, because people come in and it's like, "Sorry, your printer's not working," I mean, yeah, so, yeah, so if everyone's okay with me going forward, that would be great. All right, good. Um, and then, do you want me to talk about the insurance stuff now, or do you want to talk about that later?
Yeah, as I said, we have a separate item, but if you want to just-
Just go, keep going.
Cut it off in the agenda later.
Okay, so, um, insurance for, um, so we've switched insurance companies going, or, um, care- not carriers, but, um, agents, we've now are with Metzwood Harder, and Jen Van Duzen, who also works, um, does the town, is also doing ours now. She also does a bunch of libraries throughout this area, so she's, yes, I like that. So the problem that we're having right now is that our reliability carrier, a KDF, has found out, um, has, when we talked to them about summer camp and what kind of liability insurance we need for summer camp, and that we needed to get molestation and, um, sexual abuse coverage, they said they will no longer carry us at all. So they were going to drop us right away, but Jen fought them and said, "Please, at least give us until December." So we have until December, um, to take, yeah, well, to take ta- to take, um, camp off of our, our responsibility. And they want proof that we have, um, that we've stopped the camp, and they want it to be very cut and dried, that the library has nothing to do with camp anymore, because otherwise they'll drop us, come jam, come to suffer. Um, Jen has tried finding other carriers, nobody is taking on new policies right now, because the care, the, the world is going nuts, and every, I guess, you know, what did she tell me, that it's, um, there's so many losses on different property claims all over the country, that we were denied by Utica, which is the same one that New Lebanon and Kinderhook have, and their reasoning for that is because we're a framed building without fire hydrants and without a paid fire department nearby.
The volunteer film camp?
Yeah.
Uh-uh, nope.
The fire code.
Can't rely on those guys. No, I know, right? So.
If you, if you hold on.
Well, we can't, they'll draw, Acadia will drop us, so.
I, I used to do that, that's, that's not normal, like Utica is what they call a, a standard carrier, Acadia's a standard carrier, and they use file records. Have, you know, all the actuaries are based upon table, they center EMS, prices, risks, for risk. So no, but you go to them, and you say, "This is what we've got," they would give you a multi-parent policy, and including the camp. A couple of unpoisoned costs would be, right now, we pay about four thousand dollars a year.
Three, yeah.
Three to four, probably would be over ten.
Oh.
I'm just telling you that, and that's just what I experienced with me.
Yeah.
Because the camp is a, is a, a real, that's a scary thing, exactly. But, because the molesta- no, not the molestation, just kids in general, and just, no, I mean, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure when the underwriter, Acadia said, you have, I mean, I could just see that conversation.
Yeah.
And they, and they turned cancel you, they have to give you the policy.
Oh, okay.
Could, because there was not exposure, they would say, well, you didn't disclose this.
Can the town cover that, and we-
They don't, so the town would have to, um, the town still already does all of that, but the town would have to take over the whole program, that we can't officially, yeah. And the town's willing to do that, they're willing to tate rate, I mean, that's kind of what I got from PJ, is that they're, well, we're gonna keep it going, but,
Yeah.
um, that would mean, though, that they would have to hire somebody there to do what we do here, and, um, I definitely can't do any more hours on top of all that, so they would have to just, it would have to just be out of our hands completely. Um, we can still help with, like, you know, doing programming and, and that kind of thing, but we can't do anything else.
And maybe the staff might be just as willing to work there, I mean, the, the staff that work in the summer.
Right, I talked to Jessica, actually, briefly today, and I was like, and she's like, "Oh, maybe I will just reply for it," so she might, and, you know, she said she might be willing to do it, and she's done it before, so it's not like it would be, uh, out of there, a, a burden, but, I mean, they're gonna have a lot of stuff they have to figure out, so, unfortunately.
So we're out of the summer camps? Well, I mean, I think, it looks like it's, that's the option, that's gonna make sense, so I think we have to go.
The agent could go and find you.
She's trying.
I mean, she'll try. And if I think, put in a lawyer to believe them.
Yeah, ultimately, towns, they'll all have to decide how much they will pay.
Exactly.
To the extent that they want to offload this. It's, it's not gonna be in our dime, basically, there, it may be less expen- they may find it maybe less expensive for them to pay the insurance and pay us to do it.
Well, they, we can't do- We-
Do what, what's someone saying, where you, yeah, find a new carrier that will do it?
Yes.
Different, but-
Yeah, the issue is coverage and the cost of coverage, so that if someone covers the insurance, we can do it.
It sounded pretty clear that, like, if you have summer camp, if you're doing it, we will not contain you. If they get a different carrier, yeah.
That was my-
Okay, okay.
It's, it's, it's a question of money.
Gotcha. So-
But it may be less expensive.
It all depends, I mean, the, the town would have a better chance of, you know, insurable interest. You could kind of put it in there, for us, it's, it's a huge expense, because our normal, just our normal day-to-day operations is much more-
Just, just someone needs to do the numbers.
Yeah, 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 I mean, it's a matter, so, so if the town got thrown, they said, "Okay, fine, to, to do the camp, we're gonna charge you twenty-five hundred dollars," or something like that, which would not be out of the question, it would be a, a short-term policy, sixty, thirty days, thirty, right, a six, sixty-day policy that covers it, and your rider that'll buy.
Yeah, so, um, so I think, really, um, it's a kind of a wait-and-see with-
Yeah, see what the town comes up with, but I mean, I was afraid that was gonna happen, the minute, the minute it appeared that they didn't know about the camp.
Yeah, that's the thing, though, is that on our insurance, I know we put some account.
Well, you probably did, but that doesn't mean it was an underwriter who had the process did.
Was noticed.
Yeah, I mean, you'd be amazed how many things would fly right through.
No, I'm not amazed, actually.
The library, what, what could possibly-
Oh, I know.
And that would be, just going to stay here, okay, library, CD, boom, boom, here we go, no problem, takes us five minutes, process it, because they call our mind. Suddenly you say, "What about," and they said, and they look at it, and they said, "Shit," so.
Yeah.
And that's even worse.
So we're, so we're good for-
This year.
This year.
Find a carrier, uh, the town will do it, or unlikely the town will pay us even more to do it.
If we find a carrier. Yeah, and they'll pay the difference. I think they're probably would be willing to do that, yeah.
Yeah, sure, they, they, they shouldn't. Could be a very, you'll have to look at that policy different.
I'm, I should be really looking for-
Like, how, if there was an incident? Even for the stuff that isn't in our policy, like molestation?
I don't think so.
That would be tricky.
Yeah, I don't think-
If there's a policy, have an endorsement on there, it's sizable.
No, it doesn't have an endorsement, no, we never, we, we never got the exclusion, no.
Policy may cover.
Which is why Acadia wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was my guess, that it was probably, if they're going, "We want to cancel now."
How are you doing on the other side of compensation?
If, if they didn't, it was their problem, where they just claim, maybe it won't take time.
No, but if it's on the bottom, yeah.
Right, we would just see if, we can, I mean, honestly, we can, we can do the parties that are seeing out, that's not a big deal, and just, they're kind of like Arabs anyway, they, the town just pays for it. Other than that, word, it's awesome. That would all be part of summer camp, yeah, so.
I think this is a good opportunity for us to think about, um, what, like, how our role in this, and the whole youth commission, which is, commission is an awfully big word for the number of people who are on it.
It's a lot, so I just remember the fact.
Like you said, school, not having a narrative to throw around the chairs, so I think, you know.
We have the access.
Right now, we get, the money that we get paid for camp, uh, some of that is attributed down to Kim's salary, but what we don't do is, we actually don't count for the fact that all of the time, for those couple months that Kim is spending, and that's time that she's not able to spend on the library, or that she's working a lot of extra hours, and it's trying to make up that way. Um, I think, so, I, I think it's a good time for us to actually think about a change on this anyway, because it's not like we're sitting around with, like, "We don't have enough to do, and this is, you know, it's a great way to fill our time," you know? It's, it's something, and I think it would be beneficial for the, if, if this is a change in this, and then your commission becomes a little bit more of a town thing, and get them, and then there's an opportunity to sort of maybe revive that a little bit, bring in some more people, I know it's a, you know, it's hard to get people to do anything, but, um, you know, so it's not just library folks that are having to do this, and we don't have, uh, you know, essentially, we have a, a board position that's kind of dedicated to that, um, which, I mean, there's a lot of benefits to us being involved in this, but there's also a lot of things that, um, just like how, we didn't, we didn't want to really lose having camp here, but now that they're not here, it's like, oh, it's nice to not, it's nice to have a community group for this month, and not have to, like, not have programs, and not have to deal with the, you know, the, the law, and all that kind of stuff, so, there's, you know, the pros and cons, but I think we could find some ways of doing that thing. Be a beneficial time to make change.
Yeah, from a financial standpoint, I think if you actually do the numbers, you will see the, what is that, the about seventy-five hundred gallons? Whatever the number is, we are spending way more in terms of time and focus for that four thousand dollars, it's like a huge undertaking, which is not to say it's not a wild undertaking, it's just simply like, this is a deal for the town, it provides a significant service, but it's also a resource draw.
And as long as they're permitted to keeping it going without us, and we'll find a way to do that, it's, it's like, maybe not about-
Yeah, because I think then it will allow us to have, uh, a focus of, how can the library enhance camp, like you're doing today, bringing summer reading, or doing things that can actually have a little bit more of a, that kind of focus, and I'm still participating, I don't have the whole administrative overhead.
Yeah.
What we may be able to do is bring programs to the city, the town on camp, and get it on a fee-for-service basis, and be an independent contractor, which, it may have insurance, insurance impact, but I suspect there's a material difference between providing a fee for service in a program since, as opposed to taking responsibility for counselors, amperes, and all that stuff.
That's actually a good idea, I kind of like that, that could be a way for us to do.
I mean, I don't know, I don't think there'd be much of a kickback, I mean, I mean, so, well, you have a library, you used to run the camp, how you know?
But they, I'm gonna say I've always paid for them, so, and I think it's-
So the camp is seen more as a town thing, it's had to be held.
Yeah, I think it's like kind of a convoluted thing that I still even, I'm like, so the town pays for it, but we do it.
Yeah, I, the minute you started talking about it, I was like, I didn't really follow, when you talk about liability, you're kind of going, whoa.
And part of, um, the town paying us for it, to your point about the four fourteen, it's like, then people are, that, from other people's perspective, we're getting paid to do the camp, so that's even less reason to fund the library, right? Even though it's an adequate, they don't think that, yeah, either way.
Four thousand, I have suspicion that's no one thinking about this.
Most people just see it as, "Oh, the library runs summer camp." They don't, under, but we always have to say, "We, we rent it, but we, the town pays for it, it's a town program," they have to make sure that people know that, you know.
Does it feel to you that it would just be a relief?
It would be a huge amount of work off my shoulders.
Yeah.
You know.
And you could still have impact, and with the programs and so on.
Right, I mean, I, I, and be able to, you know, focus more on summer stuff, and then actually be able to maybe bring more programs to the camp, you know, but when you're dealing with summer lunch, and, you know, all the, the paperwork and all the other stuff, it's like, so, and Ari's got to do a ton of stuff, and she's not getting any compensation for it, so it's like, you know, I don't know. I think, as much as I don't-
Do you know that it's not just the day that it's being run, but like, is the whole town, or, yeah, we want to make this happen?
I think so, it sounded like it. Definitely, I would say that.
So I'm gonna assume probably the September workshop meeting. We've been, I'll see where things stand, but-
But I'll keep everyone updated if I hear feedback from Jen about what, what's going on, so.
How many years have you been doing this, you can, the, the library?
Um, it has to be over ten. I think it started, it started, wait, no, um, let's see, I was born twenty-nine, two thousand nine, two thousand eleven is when I started. It probably started somewhere around twenty thirteen, because I don't think it was here, I think it was just starting back up again when I started working here.
Yeah, with the five percent, no.
It was like twenty fourteen, I think, yeah, so it's probably been about ten years that we've been doing it, so. Yeah. Yeah.
Show something that looked like they're maybe. Also, I think it's, I mean, besides it being really hot and them not having any inside space, it seems to be working out really well, they have so much more space to do. Their games and, um, this is unrelated but cute, they make these little lantern things to hold.
But we were actually able to use the inside the fire hall, like that's where I did my program and, um.
I think they're.
They're more open to it. Yeah, and they did let them put a hose, um, from spigot that's inside the building out and they had a sprinkler going, so when it was really hot, they were able to. That just has broken, I'm just right all over it. We did the one day with the bounce house.
Charlotte Town. And they had a festival at the harbor. They must have had fifteen different kinds of bounce houses, one after. Thousands of kids. The three year old and the five year old. It was just like the mother of all festival bounce house.
The best thing in the world, my kids. And he loved every minute of it. Loud and annoying.
Mine do not as good as the trampoline. Talk about liability.
I know, right? Well, they have one in Albany.
But that was like kid crap.
Are you, are you talking about the one in Velasia? Oh, okay, I think it's still there. Yeah, my sister tore her ACL there, it was great. Um, one last thing I wanted to let you all know about, this happened today, so I didn't, I didn't put it in my report, but Jared Brazey stopped over. And wanted to talk about the time capsule that I had no idea was buried on our property. Yes, yeah, it apparently. No, they moved it when Four Fat Fowl bought it. Um, and we, it was kind of like, where did this thing go and? People, Joe Brown, whose daughter was part of it, said, no, it got moved over to here and they actually found it where they think it was. Um, and we couldn't, every, no one knew where this rock went. So this is the rock that had the plaque in it, it's like this huge folder. Apparently it's actually back over there, it's just covered by some trees. Yeah, like, he said it's close by to where the benches are. Yeah, so it's ten years from now is when they're gonna dig it up again, so. Yeah, yeah, because they wanted to do it as a fifty year thing. And so Jared wanted to make sure it was okay that he, he wants to. Clean out the area so people can see that, yes, it's still there, you know, because people are curious about it. So, um, he just wanted me to make sure that it was, it was good, that he goes in and brush hogs a little bit. Yeah, he wants, he and a friend, I guess someone else from the class are going to do it. It would be fifty year anniversary, yeah. So they, they, um, put it in in nineteen eighty four and then they dig it up in thirty four.
You know what all was in it?
Yeah, I can, um, lots of stuff, they went, the kids went around town and got. Items from different businesses, they got lots of different things from, so, um. Let's see, where do we have? So it's got, yeah, it's got, um. Historical, so it's got a menu from the Pico Lo Mondo restaurant, a calendar from the Brown Insurance Agency, state trooper's uniform. Dog biscuits, a railroad spike, and I. And I like Ike pin. A full stop its badge and telephone book nineteen eighties. So, I mean, it was something that, you know, fifth graders did, their project, but. But you can see too, that this has been how big the thing is. So yeah, let me all see this. So I just wanted to. Yeah, he wants to just, I guess there's some tree sapling that are covering it, so you can't see it. All right, well, then I'll, I'll let him know that he can do it once. So, yeah, I think that's pretty much all that I have in my, in my report. It's the bowl that you put the casket in. But still. Make sure, still make sure that the seal was okay, then I told him, you know, hopefully it hasn't got ruined.
And I, I didn't recognize, so I'll be.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
We'll have to figure out what to do with the.
I think eventually the stuff will probably go to the historical societies, my guess.
All right.
All right, there you go.
Go on to financials and we can talk about the bank.
I, I appreciate you. My attention, I still can't get into.
I think that the credit card is a whole different thing. Because on my personal account, I can see my debit card. I don't have a credit card, but the debit card is there, so, but ours is not a debit card, it's a credit, it's an actual credit card, so I think that we'd have to.
So they originally said, asked it, or told me, and sound like there was a general program with credit cards. But then I had another person call back and he was helpful and he seemed to know what was going on. I talked to him twice and he said, no, the problem is that the credit card is in your name. And so it's under your account, I was like, I don't have an account, uh, it's only the library account. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but, but so they're saying the problem is it's under personal accounts. And they did something else, I'm like, okay, I see the connection to the business account, I see the business thing. And we'll, we'll send the information through so that it gets connected properly. But that's now been, I think, two weeks, so it's still, still not showing up, it's not even showing up, but I log in, so it's not like it's here. Um, and the e-statements.
I can't see those either.
Still not next, so I just checked in tonight just to make sure. Still can't get any statements, so, um, and that I think was a global issue with their provider who does the. Um, but it's really.
It was Capcom.
Um, I would just be on the safe side. Yeah.
I, I could see the credit card in the old base and I don't see one, anything with a change.
Oh, that's a whole different. They migrated everything over to different systems, so it's all completely. And honestly, for personal stuff, I think it's great, because I, I can see like every account that we have our names on, like. And whereas with Capcom, I couldn't do that, I have to have it all separate, so it's good. But I also have to be really careful when I put a deposit in, that they put the deposit into. The library, because yesterday I was depositing something and they had the account number and I'm like, wait, 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 wait. Tell me that this is the library's account, and they're like, oh, yeah, no, this was your person. That's just wonderful. This is not okay.
That would be wrong.
And I'm like, that would be really.
My version is the same thing. I have a version. Finally, and this one I went migrate to a new system. Finally, finally worked it out, but. All the permutations we went through, because I said, yeah, I want that email on my personal account.
No, yeah, yeah. I may, I know, obviously make sure every time I put it in that it's, it's not. What's that? Yeah, 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 I didn't set up, um, I mean, we have so much cash that we have to put in, so, yeah, I always deliver.
So, the, you know, I asked about those, so are you not paying, are you still gonna pay the credit card? So you're, if you're getting, you're still getting statement, okay.
I'm getting the credit card statement, that one's fine, I'm not getting reconciliating or like our monthly statements.
So I think if you not want that, oh, they have a backend way to get it. And you may not continue like they did last time, so.
Yeah, they haven't been able to do that for July, or for June, I mean. Yeah, no, I haven't. They were like, oh, well, you should get it in a couple of days, so I haven't, so I'll call them. And they said that you should have gotten it in a couple of days, so they were like, well, she can just email you. Okay, so.
Be a bag.
Yeah, fix it.
Do better.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other?
Not really, everything was, we're still, you know, while I'm trying. Some expensive stuff, our year-to-date about seventy four thousand. We're selling our insurance, etc.
I thought there was a question as to whether we opened a CD.
Yeah.
We were, we were gonna talk to, and I haven't had a chance to talk. Uh, virtue is five percent. For six months, for six months. Yeah, I mean, and I don't know, I mean, we've got a lot in the, uh, money market, if you want, I mean, I don't know how much we're making on the regular savings. Or half a percent.
Yeah.
I know that our last, for the money market, um, our last interest payment was like two hundred and thirty dollars, we got. Hundred and eighteen, because it didn't include the twenty grand that I just put in.
I mean, it might be worth a while to say, let's go to virtue.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think so, the, the money market right now, the money market regular includes the.
There is some interest.
No, but where is, where did the, where did the twenty thousand go?
That is in the.
That went into the money market, so the money market is now.
On thirty eight, yeah.
Yeah, this was as of last week, so.
So I think we should. I, I think it would make sense, I mean, I don't think.
Uh, I know, I know.
Well, it's available balance, so maybe.
Oh, it's probably gonna.
How do you get into this now?
It's not working. Oh, there we go. So. Oh, I'm, no, so. Oh, I'm sorry, I was wrong, so when I deposited the twenty thousand, that was on June twenty seventh, and that brought our balance up to one twenty seven. And then we put the ten thousand in July, so now we are done.
Well, when I get back, I will go over.
Our dividend is two point seven five percent.
Right, and if it's not that. We don't need access.
Yeah, I mean, you lock it up for six months and then, then, I mean, I've got one. The church one. And, uh, we put seventy five in there.
The special projects. I'm wondering. So, does it change depending on how much money you have in that account of your interest rate? Because our special project savings is not a money market account, and we're getting point one five interest.
Yeah.
On that.
Yeah, that's why it goes up a little bit.
If this was a money market, we'd be getting a better interest rate. Is that?
Why don't, just talk to them. We're looking to maximize the interest rate and you've got us in the accounts that just. So why do you have available? It helps us manage our cash management. And seeing what they can do for you.
So, yeah, so our scholarship is also a money market account, and that has eighteen thousand in it, and we're getting one point seven five on that account. So we should definitely change this.
I mean, particularly like, I mean, your, your. Scholarship account, we disperse.
So the regular money market, we're getting two point seven five, scholarship, we're getting one point seven five. And special projects, point one five. No, point.
I mean. Is it? If we move the special project savings just to the money market and kept tracking it separately, I mean, is that. You wanna keep those. Accounts separate?
Would I mess up the whole bookkeeping everything too?
It would be harder.
Well, then don't worry, if, if it's not, I mean, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
When I, when I spoke to the, when we talked to the accountant, we were changing all of this stuff, he was like. You can keep all of your money in one thing and then just change it to, you know, and, and account for it in that way. We were like, let's just keep it separate, because that way it's easier to see where, which account has what and, you know, where it's going, so. For me, it's easier to see, but if, you know, we wanna try and do it.
Together and we pulled out, let's say, the special projects. That goes to special projects.
Right. Right.
If, if we're able to do it and keep them separate, it probably there's a simplicity to that that is beneficial.
Oh, I, I totally agree.
If, if it's like, if, if there's a huge dollar difference, then maybe we consider it, but. And let me know if you're, if you're, are you gonna go in person, Richard?
Uh, we'd probably go, uh, probably the Monday, I'll get back.
If you, if you need me to go with you or you want me to go with you, I can do it Thursdays, Thursdays are the better day for me to get out of town, so.
You could have a master account with the subaccounts, I don't, you know, and, and so like, if you get it in a money market account, like create subaccounts.
Makes sense for the special projects of the money market to be, uh, get the maximum amount. As far as moving, you know, uh, eighteen thousand over or eighteen hundred, not sure. You would get the same rate.
It's, I think.
You've got, you've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And maybe Rob, you can figure out how to do that.
Okay.
Then we might go talk to our good friends at virtue.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, if you're, if you're willing to.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, I mean. Getting back, it should be.
When are you coming back?
Uh, this, are we from seven?
Okay, so maybe I'll come with you, just so I can see what, yeah, that way I can see what's, what, what they say. Nice.
Nine.
Okay.
Okay, seven twenty-nine. Bank of points. Yeah. And we just say, you know, if you, if we're not happy, then we're gonna move. And I'm not happy with the website, that's for sure.
Okay.
It shouldn't be this much trouble on the website. Rob, you was how much.
And I think they had. When they did the last.
IT and changing systems.
Oh, I, I believe, I know, I mean, AIG, they did it every six months.
Combine all.
Thirty days. I just worry about the credit card.
Like I have the special projects in QuickBooks. And I have sub-accounts in the QuickBooks for that special project, so I could do the same thing. With, if we wanted to put all of the money into one money market account and find out that that's the best way to do it. I mean, we can make, I can make that work.
I don't, I don't wanna make more work in the, if it's already okay the way it's grown.
It would just mean that, I, I mean, I would just close out some of these, these accounts and create sub-accounts. It's not, it wouldn't be a big, I don't think it would be a big drop.
Let me, when we visit.
Goals are higher interest and simplicity.
Well, yeah, higher interest and, and, and.
Yeah.
But as you say, when you're combining systems.
It's really wrong.
It never populars.
It's only been a month and a half, so I'm sure that.
Yeah, I mean, I was made.
And we're complaining, you know, for sure.
Oh, that's what they said. Just. But I, I, so you said Thursdays and Fridays.
Thursdays is good for me, but if Kim, if you guys wanna do initial.
Let me, I mean.
If I'm needed, I'll go. If not, I'm sure you guys know more than I do.
Wasean.
Wasean.
Wasean. Wasean is actually like right where my house.
Yeah. It's literally halfway between here and me.
Here, can I meet us?
I don't know.
Don't go there. All right, Joe.
Shut her down.
I will, I will call them Monday. We'll, we'll sit down and tell them, how do we get the maximum rate and without, you know? And we'd like to make this simple.
There we go, sounds perfect. Very good. All right, thank you, guys. All right.
Excellent.
Let's jump to building grounds, and then I think there will be, we'll talk brand and marketing fundraising after that.
Okay.
You guys made a lot of good progress.
Yeah, we, we. Lots of things are certainly being addressed on the ground side, things that are being addressed, the book of fifty people by the sheds. Karen, Hudson, and Qua, Neil, Beau are gonna, is that how?
Gilbo.
Gilbo. Um, are gonna, uh, take the transportation, I don't know if they have already the baby to do it. Um, the pots outside the shed, um, Toby and I are gonna weed them and plant seasonal mums. And if we can do it, move them over by the benches so that it looks more attractive, that it may be lined up by the shed. Um, but that'll probably be early fall or, or, you know, very late summer.
Mums season.
Correct.
Um, are we giving a go-ahead to, um, Kevin Bruce to do the?
Oh, the groundhogs.
Groundhogs?
Yes, I mean, I think so. I mean, I, you know how I feel about it, but that's who cares what.
We're gonna kill them?
And I didn't like that, but, um, I just wondered if it, if we might be able to wait till they kind of move out after the babies who are born and, and then we put the, the, uh, thing in, but I, I wanna get in, in the.
I, I can ask Kevin if, if, if it makes a difference. If they will actually be out.
Yeah, I mean, if they just come to that.
Has anyone spoken to the groundhogs?
We can put a notice up there and give them thirty days.
And never leaves.
Uh, he has, he has a den over here. Pre-rated from the den. And he comes out and dances.
But it's not, it's not a seasonal rental.
I think. So the idea is that, um, they will, um, get them out and have a heart fight trap, especially if they, they put them out of their misery. If they don't try to relocate them, because, um, that's not legal apparently to relocate them. And if they do, it doesn't, they don't fare well anyway, according to Kevin. Um, so they will fill them and then, um, he will get Blake hopefully to help the trenches around the perimeter. Uh, and then put this mesh stuff around so that nothing else can get it. Um, and he's doing it for free, which is awful.
Nice.
Good. Yes.
Um, okay, there's that. Um, speaking of Blake, Blake is going to, um, need the gardens on a monthly basis rather than that one, one-shot deal, and he agreed to that at the same rate of, uh, of, which I think twenty dollars an hour. Um. Uh, issues to be addressed, Karen said that she would try to find somebody to help fix our annual flooding problem so that we can, well, at, at that time, I was thinking so that we could hold summer camp. And if that goes by the wayside, we still don't want a flooded ground, so, uh, we still need to do that, and she's, she's on, on that project. Um, Jen mentioned that, um, that the summer camp tent is not in its proper sleeve in the shed. The shed is a big problem. A lot of problems with it, but, um, and so it's making accessing the other things in the shed that we might have need access to difficult. So we need somebody to volunteer to take the tent out, put it in the sleeve, and return it to the shed in more out-of-the-way spots.
We talked a little bit too, we thought maybe at the end of summer camp, where, where they're gonna bring stuff back anyway, and we've got a lot of young. So that would be a good time to do. We can just recruit them to do it and see, even if we can't get it in the sleeve, if we can just get it somewhere that it's not.
Yeah, that would be fair. Okay, um, does, does anyone actively need to? Like, who, who will take the lead on that?
Uh, I think I can with Kim. Tom, Jessica, the last days.
Okay, and then, uh, just ground issues to be addressed, but not now. Uh, Kim mentioned that the exterior paint is beginning to feel, and we need to repaint, but we thought we should wait until after the children's room renovation, because probably things will get knocked into.
I've noticed that it's really just on the old section of the building, um, so I don't know if there's something different, but, so it might, we might even just be. Yeah, I don't, it might just be something we can patch up if we want to, like, I don't know, I, I don't know much about house paintings, so.
Do you want somebody to just look at it and see if they could do it without it being?
That's, anyways, I mean, you know, it doesn't, it's not like it's looking terrible or shit terribly shabby right now, so, but there are.
I think we should get an estimate on. Not that it would be folded into that money.
Right.
But just. You know, it would cost. Project or something. Um, because we will, we, we, it would be good to get an estimate at some point, because I imagine our, um, you know, our fund for, for painting may not be sufficient, or we may need to, you know, think about.
It, when we did it and, um, the last time we did the painting, it was ten thousand to do the entire building.
Okay, so.
And we have ten thousand in that account.
Probably done up though, I mean, that's an expensive thing.
Yeah.
Cost of paint.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, okay, so we'll, we'll get to that. Um, then as far as the building is concerned, and that damn door. I got Bob Nichols, who had done work at my house, to agree to come over and check on it. Uh, yesterday, he actually showed up and checked on it, um, and he asked me today, did, did we just want the door or did we want the casing? And I said, we want the whole thing, we want the whole project, so, so we did that.
Yep.
Um, so hopefully we're back from him very soon. And, you know, the other thing is the windows, you said there are a number of windows that are stuck, including in your office, and you can't open the window if you want to get fresh air. And, um, so we thought maybe we, we should ask Paul also to see if he'd be going to check it out.
Yeah, I spoke to Paul a while ago, and he said that anything we need help with, he's happy to come over, because it used to be that Vicki would say, oh, Paul, you know, the, the flagpole's not working, and he would just come over and fix it for us. And he said he would really be happy to come over and do, like, little things like that to stay involved, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay, all right. Shall we move on to? Fundraiser stuff?
Sure, you wanna do that before brand?
Uh, yeah, is there anything? Specific.
I mean, I, I think the, the thing related to brand is just a new resident welcome event, and it's coming up this Sunday, and I make sure that we have people here. Um, so make sure that.
Like a no.
Board can, can be here. Um, I think we have the food pretty much taking care of your beer with Mavericks and the bagels. Um, I'm bringing the food salad starter if people ever got the message of their.
I saw it.
Yeah, maybe some pressure. So I, I just wanted to make sure if there's anything else that we haven't thought of, because it feels a little bit more hazardous than it has in the past.
This was a part of people bringing other stuff, or?
No, that, that's your people brought a few things, but it's just.
It's sort of.
Bagels and.
Okay.
Bagels.
I mean, we did call it a brunch, and I think people think of brunch as being more than a bagel, but, um.
I mean, I could do it for times.
If you don't mind, that would be great.
I have nothing better to do.
Oh, yeah. Will you, will you put here?
Um, I'm gonna have. Uh, tomorrow, I'm gonna ask Rebecca to make up some folders for the new people so that we can have those available. Do we have any more brochures left over or?
No, I think it's all. We have something like ten bags upstairs for the truly new people. Um, and one of first and first-hand papers.
So, yeah, I, well, this is all gonna depend on the printer, whether or not they actually come tomorrow.
Okay.
Empty it. If I have to, I might just empty it myself, but apparently if you get a toner on you, it doesn't ever come out. Gets, it's kind of gross.
Wow. Um, the, the other thing that isn't so ideal about the new resident thing is in the past, we've asked sister organizations to come and represent their organizations, and we only have, um, SBFB, Bob Abler's company, and you said Arlene.
I think.
She's a maybe.
Maybe. Uh, Millie Smith from the rail trail is gonna.
Oh, okay, yeah, just to, you know, to tell people about the various organizations, and we can obviously speak to the food pantry.
Right, yeah.
Um, you can speak to everything. And no senior. That's. I guess we can all. Okay.
John DeFries asked at the town board meeting, like, to confirm the time again, so maybe he's planning to come.
Oh, cool, okay. Yeah, so it was just really making sure that we have everything we need and that people will be able to attend, and you will not be able to attend, are you now?
No.
You know, um.
On the air.
So the four of us and, uh, Karen maybe.
Note there, both Karen.
Oh, that's why you're on. So it is gonna be next one. Okay. Uh, that, that was it for, for brand. Um, then, if you wanna move on to the, um, fundraising event. Um, we are proposing a real change of plan, because we were having a lot of difficulty getting people to submit recipes to the cookbook, and since that was supposed to be the primary draw and the theme around what we were doing. We originally thought, let's move it back so that it's not so close to the annual appeal, let's have it in October, but the first thing to do to have, like, the harvest festival would be to check with Sharina to see if that was, uh, possible, and she said, no, that October's out. So, uh, I was sort of poking around, uh, uh, inexpensive ways to fundraise, and an idea that popped up on the internet was the trivia night fundraiser. And the more I looked into it, the more I thought that could be really cool, um, for a bunch of reasons, um. Uh, it's, it's new for us, so something, something different and different for the community. It's fun, it's low overhead, it doesn't cost very much, we don't have to have fancy food. Um, we get a really low heater, um, like Jen mentioned, uh, little pizzas or something like that, uh, they have an oven there, so we could do that.
Somebody makes pizzas, right?
Somebody else makes really good cookies too. I mean, they have pizza cookies.
We were picking it, the track. Water, different clientele, which would be great, because we're really looking to be good at the side of the stand up soap a little bit. Um, we can retain our established date of November sixteen, four thousand, so we don't have to change anything. Um, and because, because it's more of a fun event than a fundraiser, it feels less divisive, I think, of the annual appeal, so it's more of an event. But we still can make money with the, with selling tickets, with, um, with the alcohol, and there's various other things, if you take the time to read this thing that is in the folder, the trivia night proposal. So we just need to, um, we, we'll really need a fundraising event committee to focus on this, um, we'll need an MC for it, we'll need somebody to take tickets at the door, and we'll have to do some planning, but we have pretty much time, and it seems to me like not that complex and not that expensive. And freshened it, so that's.
I used to be one of the new eleven in high school.
Oh, do you know who the MC was?
No.
I think so.
Definitely not.
I, I ran into him here once, I can tell.
Your other, my other one. Oh, definitely.
Well, that's right, you didn't have all five. Yeah.
Oh, I can get a microphone.
Get a ball horn.
When we, when we talked to Polly, like, she was, she was in agreement that it seemed like, you know, she was genetic, I'm feeling right. Figure we can still pursue it slower if we need to. Because that, people still are like, yeah, yeah, that's great, but they're not actually going.
Yeah.
Um, but, and she felt like.
They're going to the internet.
I mean, if I can say this. Sharing the recipes. And then we can make a funny backstory and.
It'll be the. And she thought, well, you don't even know what you're doing, just have fundraisers, but I think if you have fundraisers, you don't have a power, like, what's the food gotta be, it's gotta be something more exciting, and then. What's the thing you gotta be, or something attracts it, so I do think that the trivia is something that gives it a, kind of a reason to, to be, you know, a reason that people come out, um, and have some fun.
We could also, um, use Deborah's suggestion of having somebody solicit, you know, make a speech about how important the library is. Uh, and, and try to gather some more money, uh, real time with some moving kind of.
Even a cutesy thing too, like a trivia cat, like, you know, like bonus round of like, you know, how many? Whatever it is, like, you know, a library-related question. Show you how much, you know, how much the library contributes.
There are like a ton of books about libraries. And you could probably pull, like Midnight Library, which is, I think, a cool book.
Yeah.
I mean, there are any number of things, and there are quote-spout libraries, you could probably organize a subject matter trivia. Um, lo- library-related, which might be fun.
I think it could be one of the rounds.
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting a full-on night of library stuff.
Oh, I like that.
Maybe so.
Different organizations in town. The other thing is Bill Musso does trivia at M and M's every week and he's a real, couldn't have a team. We couldn't do the team if he's involved. He's a real, he would win everything. But uh, but so he suggested we do it out and just also.
And we can still look into the alcohol providers.
Right, we can, yeah.
Uh, and we could also see if there's any, anyone who would like to provide food for free uh, at the.
Yeah, we can do that as, yeah. So I think we just need, since we yet again shifted gears, just get the boards. Um, go, but yeah, that's makes sense to pursue and.
You like it? I love it. Yeah. I would think at least.
I mean, at the library, they had the, the high school, they had twelve, I think, the last time.
You have to like specify how many teams.
So it's four person per team.
It's four, okay. So if we do four persons per team and then if people don't have. Create maybe there's sort of.
You don't have to help.
No, right. If you're gonna be legal, then you get put into a team.
Yeah, no, I know. I, that part, I, I just don't want people to be like, um.
Right, they can still do it, they just.
And then you can have us then.
Well, it's about space and.
Right, I should, yeah.
Yeah, but we have a lot of space over there, so.
I guess the only, the only issue, like I would think that you have to sort of have the teams segregated, so we might wanna have. Larger teams because the tables are bigger, because if they're right next to each other, you hear what, what people are saying, what they're suggesting are the answers, right? I mean, there were these cases. Yeah, we brought these tables over.
Well, that would work if you.
And then also I could, like, plenty of sets when people are.
Over, over, over again. Now, M and M's down in the.
I guess I'm not, I'm not gonna ask them that we do the finding fires on the actual fire.
Yeah, we didn't talk about that.
We were thinking about it. Like, how do we do this? So to go pursue.
Really?
Yep.
He was an RA. He was a senior.
So it sounds like we apply it from the. Um, and then we need to establish a committee, so any volunteers, I'm in obviously.
Uh, I'll, I'll volunteer. Cause I should have some time. Well, actually, I mean, literally my whole, my whole schedule. As I foresee the, the next few months, I will be around.
Okay, so I think we'll probably have to have at least one meeting for a month.
Our, our, this is the same problem of our committee. Although I did learn in, I've done one of these webinars, and you can have a committee as a whole, something. Well, I know, but I mean, you can have it without being.
Right, I mean, if you have like.
And plus get paid for the alcohol. Um, we can also have a raffle during it. We could, um, and we'll have a team that wins would get cash. And not to sound. A lot of times people give the cash back to the.
Sometimes they do. I mean, you have a, you can have a, put a, put a dictionary there and ask people how many pages there are in that.
Oh, like have a lot of.
Stay huge dictionary.
Yeah, so we can do other.
Yeah, there's passwords of fun.
Okay, so we're, we're on and I'll send some sort of schedule for when, when the committee's gonna meet.
Uh, on that topic, you just reminded me just, I wanted to mention, so Deborah, I think I said this in my email, she's willing to still do the, write the annual appeal letter. Which is really great. Um, but she does want um, suggestions for who to talk to. So like, like the way she talked to Elaine and it was from her, and she thought if there was somebody in storytime, like a parent, she thought the parent would be very effective at this point. So I don't.
Can we get someone from the mothers group? Which I think is just a wonderful program.
Uh, oh, the um, nursing. Yeah, we haven't really gotten a lot of people for that.
It sounds delightful.
I know.
Awesome.
I know, I was so hoping that. It was, those kinds of things were great for me when I was with my kids.
But it's like people isolated. There's really no place here where nursing mothers can get together and just like.
Although it's, it was like, it's like all babies at the.
Um, well, that's the thing is that there were, there are a few nursing moms and then there are, but they're like, oh, but. How do I take care of my toddler at the same time? And how do I do this and that? And um, but there's also moms who are, you know, well, I was going to and I can't. And you know, so it's just.
Is there any way to make it easier? Get volunteers who can watch the kids. It just seemed like such a nice program.
No, I, I do too. I, that's why I was so happy when they approached me. This is perfect. Like I said, it was a huge help for me when I was with my, had my boys and I would be great. I always thought it would be wonderful to have someone like that here. What about um, Noanne, it's a Marie, to talk to them? I mean, Noanne used to be a board member. Yeah, yeah, he used to be a board member, so he's.
And he's a real promoter, like when he had his birthday, um.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
And then, they have the two kids, you know, I mean. Yeah.
I'll, I'll approach them again, cause I already asked them, probably somebody who needs help to manage. I'll ask.
That's gonna help.
Or annual.
Now, they're great. I love that idea. And I bet they would want to.
Yeah, I thought they would do it. Yeah.
Cool. Yeah, I'll ask. I'll, I'll ask that. That would be great.
And he can even talk about his help with the website. I mean, they've been involved in so many ways, the typewriter, they, they.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's been, they've both been really great. Yeah. I'll ask him, let's see what they say.
Alrighty, uh, shall we go ahead with the policy?
Yes, I reported a policy. We got some comments, like from Jen, a couple. They were excellent suggestions. Unless anyone's got any issue with what I've done. What I would suggest is let's adopt all of, everything that's been done and if we wanna change it, we can change it whenever we want to. But at least we will have both a internet policy as well as something that is correlated to our code of conduct as well. It just seems like, let's just pull the trigger and. I mean, I think it's why. I, I distributed here, this is what we have, so we can zote on it or whatever. They actually, if you, for whatever reason, it didn't put out, who's it's who, but Jen had a couple of changes on the. Code of Conduct, I think uh, parental position was. Hold from the children regardless of age, but not be left in the library for babysitting purposes. However, children aged twelve and over may work independently at the library period. But I don't think there was any, did you have anything else? There would may have been one other thing.
I was asking if there were changes to what we saw, we probably know.
Just do it. It's just so, so it's a markup.
Code of Conduct.
Yes, basically, you got both of those. And I threw some of the things that I thought were appropriate and com- conduct there and tried to interconnect.
So would you want this to be written up as a two separate policies?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in favor of adopting your changes and, and finalizing it and so that we have it and, you know, at some point, somebody has an issue with something.
I mean, these, these are, these are, our code of conduct product policy has been in effect. We haven't had an issue with it.
Right.
The internet policy is fairly consistent with what other libraries are doing. And we haven't had an issue with that, respect to that either. I mean, I, I think there, you could do it differently. Places have done it differently. You could be more aggressive. I don't think that that's necessarily where we need. It seemed to me, okay.
Yeah. Do we need to vote on this?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor?
What I'll do is I'll just put these in final form and just.
I have a, I have a file format. I have a template, so I can just, if you just send me this, I can just copy paste it.
It's, I pulled it off of your email.
Oh, you said it's, it's posted, right, Sarah? No?
No, I don't think it's.
Sarah, Scott, did you send? You, you, it, it was supposed to blast.
I circulated what I did. Jen made corrections. You did it in a shared document, which you sent to me.
But that was never sent to me updated, but the loan to this month, so.
Such a, you sent me the updated, the shared updated.
That's the last.
This is the same.
I'll make sure that.
Okay, alright.
When I put it into the, the final format, I'll make sure that it, it matches everything.
Okay.
And then I can upload it to this, um, so that people know what it was that we were.
Right, and. It'll be, and I'll, I'll put it in the, on the website as well, so it'll go into the.
Alright, let's see, dumped all around.
Yes.
Policy number one, we got a policy.
Yeah, just what you want me to, what, I'll do whatever you want me to do next. Just point me and tell me what the most important thing is and I will take a look at it. Give you my comments. If we're missing anything, those should be first. We just want something reviewed over point in time. I'm on a roll, I. I, it does make a difference. This stuff is interesting. I enjoy doing this. It's sort of like, it was an interesting project. It was interesting looking.
You're welcome.
I mean, if you wanna go to the website and see what we have already and, cause the website does have.
I think Eric sent me the whole kit.
Yeah, it, it's on the website.
Alright, so reasons to me.
So no other updates on yours? We covered that, we covered that, this. Anybody have any new business?
Um.
I know, right there.
I was going to either reach out to. Okay, well, um, and ask them if I could sell pottery behalf of the library. I don't, do you know how much they charge for?
I don't think they do, but I don't.
I'll ask them. I'll just sort of say I'm gonna do it if.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
I think I have enough stuff to just, so.
That's great.
I don't know if I have enough people to buy, but.
So I was contemplating, because of the Olympics are happening, doing a summer, like an Olympic event for summer reading. So I'm wondering if I can pull it together, like doing outdoor games and stuff for families. Um, so we might be able to do that on the same day as their.
Maybe we can do that theme dive thing, that game.
Cornhole, yeah, well, I was thinking, yeah, like cornhole and. And I went to horseshoes. I mean, you know, and then there's like, we could set up um, like obstacle courses for kids and it just kind of do different.
It's flip and fly.
That's the only problem is how wet it's.
And maybe.
We've made about a hundred bucks on the uh, big sale slash tag sale donations.
Yeah.
Although we did well on one of them.
I tried, like, we charged.
Yeah, I know. It was, it was, it was really, it was obscenious. That's.
It was, but I, I think. You know, people were, are not, not, like, I didn't know, nobody was getting, like, everybody had stuff for twenty five cents, but people were not spending twenty five cents. I was like, make a donation to the library. And like, people took like fancy make goods for twenty five cents. I was like, that is not what I was expecting.
That's just like.
A yard sale.
Okay, uh, any other new business? Uh, old business we could do. Uh, AED update, we did not get the grant from, uh, was it Troy Savings Bank or? So they, we are welcome to um, roll our application into the fall. So, so, so we are gonna do that, but in the meantime, it sounds like the town board feels like the AED that we, that they purchased for camp. Now, it's, we're just gonna be interesting if they do, if I, if we have. So we'll keep, we'll keep the grant application going. Um, in the meantime, that when the camp is over, we'll have the AED here, um, so we can think about where we want to um, mount it in the, in the K and D room, probably. Um, so that's the update there. Um.
Did we know why we didn't get it?
No, they did. Well, the only thing I know is they stayed at the, at the get-go. They said we anticipate uh, a really big. Demand for it. Uh, and it's not just libraries, it's, you know, all, it's nonprofits in the area, so.
It's probably older subscribers.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but they, they will roll it over, so hopefully we'll, we'll make that, make out in the fall. Um, and I've sent Kim a bunch of dates to plan some CPR, community classes at the library, a couple different ones of that. Um, talking about some pop-up opportunities for just compression only stuff. And then also train the, we'll do a. So. All that can continue on.
Definitely. It's gonna be great. And we are doing a um. Uh, the preparedness program or the, I think it's the Air Force. Or it's New York State comes in and they do this, the program for New York State preparedness.
What's preparedness for, like, like, like what we just got?
Like emergency, yeah, weather emergency type of things, so.
Yeah, I was freaked out that I didn't access my phone. It was like, oh, this is exactly what you need. Like, if something bad happens, I can't.
If, if you wanted, Gary, now, when they had the big storm. If, if you wanted, scary news, when they had the big storm and all the trees went out, they closed twenty-two and the bridge was out. It's like the first time in my life that I was living in a location. I couldn't get in, but Janet couldn't get in. And the, the, it was like the first time where you're sort of going, if there's a problem there.
Oh.
No access. It was like really, it was just like, wow. I totally do live in the wild.
That was a little bit like the blackout in the city. I, I was in Queens and had to walk in the dark, walk over to, um,
Yeah.
The bridge and all the way to Farce Zone.
Yeah.
It's like three hours to walk.
Yeah.
I started my job as an hall director that weekend. And so we were, had to climb the seventeen stories of the dorms to make sure that all, everybody who was living there was okay. It was, it was absolutely crazy.
Yeah. I was like, thank God my kids are at camp. Cause one of them took the subway to and fro Long Island City and I would have been.
Yeah. Right. So the, what they're doing here is they, that's the New York citizen preparedness training program. And it teaches residents to have the tools and resources to prepare for any type of disaster.
So.
Hopefully we'll get some people coming to that. Yeah. I think they're reaching out to a lot of places to do it. Uh, so should be good.
Uh, you said we don't have a date yet.
For this?
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's August first.
Oh.
That's my luck. Yeah. So. That's my next set of goals to go through.
It wasn't, I'm sorry.
Five.
Anything else?
I feel like a book sale over this year.
Thought they did. Why do you, why you, that, that was like twenty thousand. It's like a.
Nineteen thousand eight hundred. Nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty.
What a question.
Yeah.
Four hundred bucks.
Cause they have.
These are all the dealers. And and the books you have are things that people obviously.
For a dollar a throw? Yeah. We sold over twenty thousand books.
We didn't have enough space for twenty thousand books.
Well, no, that's the thing is that you've got a whole setup later where your rooms and everything set up.
Was that at the church?
No, was it? No, that was in eleven. They only made two thousand. They did.
Could we, could we do something like that represent though? Like, like, it's so.
It is extremely, it's extremely labor intensive. I mean, they, the first night they made. They got there nine thirty in the morning. And there were people that were, they were just.
I mean, we always did that basically, understand.
No, it's, it's.
It's a community event and it's almost like what libraries.
I mean, what we did in the eleven is we had a buzz on turn. They sell. Yeah.
I think that we do enough programming that it's like, you know, community event focused that I don't think we need.
Um, you didn't cover, uh, sorry, I don't remember.
Oh, uh. Cause now we're just gonna, we're gonna keep our date for the, for the fundraiser. Um, and is there anything else?
Is the Halloween?
Halloween parties of. No, uh, twenty-seventh is the Sunday, right? Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, it's the twenty-seventh is the Sunday.
It'll be the twenty.
Or we'll be gonna do it on the Saturday so that it's not. I guess it would depend on what's available for the, the fire hall. Actually, that's what we did. We did it on a Saturday and I remember Vicki was working that Saturday and asked somebody to cover for her that, the last chunks that she could set up. So I mean, we don't usually have that kind of an issue.
It's reserved, it's reserved for the twenty-sixth, the Saturday.
Okay. Then I think she.
I guess I did it. Well, I did, but it's there on their calendar. So.
Good job.
Yeah, we're, we lose. I don't know, uh, at this point, if we're gonna do any strategic plan review. Um, you know, we haven't tackled that here at all. Um, and I'm not sure that that's gonna rise up to a priority. What we are gonna need to do is start the, we need to figure out if we're gonna have committees.
Oh, yeah. What do you?
Oh, yeah. So there, I did find out, I, what's this, how to manage effective board or managing effective boards. And most of it was not necessarily all that relevant to us. Uh, but they said you can have a committee of the whole and allows the board to meet as a full group without it being a board meeting. Um, it's all talk. You don't, you can't take any actions. But then the committee can make a recommendation to the board. At the board meeting and then vote. So, uh.
Let me just break this down. Take a look around this.
I know.
And take a look at. And consider that for the last twelve months. Nobody cares. The thought that any of our actions would be challenged in court by a disgruntled patient, a patient, disciplinary client based and, and seeking to overturn a decision of this board in which no one has any interest in what we are doing is simply preposterous. I'm not suggesting that we ignore the open meetings law. However, we are an association library. We can have committee meetings. We won't be making decisions to the extent that, you know, we're, we're, we're sort of here and doing it. It, don't get hung up on it. We'll figure out what's, what's best for us. We'll decide what to do. You'll talk to me about, or we'll discuss what we're doing. We don't need to worry about. This is just really.
But if you're concerned more that it's the same people and all of the. Right. So if we end up like, like we just talked about, you know, the summary, okay, kind of everybody's gonna be involved in it. So if we have a meeting, is that a board meeting? Because we're all here.
No.
Uh, so, you know, it's a committee of.
And if it is, and quite frankly, if it is. So. No one, no one is like clamoring to volunteer to do this work. And no one is gonna volunteer and no one is interested in challenging us in court as to whether we have the basis for making whatever decisions we didn't make at that particular meeting. It's just, it's just. No, no, it's, look, it's all a question of a level of risk. We can do this consistent with the open meetings law. We operate consistently with the open meetings law. The open meetings law is not a barrier to what we are currently doing. And it's not a barrier to. I just, just, just saying.
So then we start to figure out how we're allowed to have, all of our committees keep the same committee over and over.
Alternatively, what I think the real issue for this library is like, we're having enough problems recruiting and retaining board members. How do you, and, and I'm not ascribing the inability to keep people as a function of committee work or not. I don't know why people won't stick. Because I don't think we're. It's not particularly onerous and yet. Um, and, and maybe it's daunting in terms of like, okay, everyone's got a busy life coming once a month, coupled with the baby work, maybe chases people away. I don't know.
I think, I, my personal opinion is that people feel like they should be doing more than they are. They don't feel like doing these. And so that gets them a bad feeling. And so they, they.
Okay. So, so I mean, and that's something for us to be mindful.
Right.
If this, if it just becomes daunting.
And then it's, to me, what, it, it's hard to balance then, um. How do you get the work done? And, and if, if the same people are doing it, then it becomes like, it shouldn't just be, it, it, you know, one person or two people like, okay, well, this is what we want to do. This is what we're doing. You know, and that, because that also I think becomes a turn off too. So how do you balance involving people, but not making them feel like, oh, I don't want to get involved in this.
But truth be told. Think about who's here, what we're doing, what gets done. You do a ton of work with receptive branding. You're interested in that. You do a ton of work in connection with youth committee. You do mostly everything. You work like a dog and, and you're doing, I'm the only loafer in this. It was joy. A lot of them. But, but no, I mean, I mean, I'd be cute, but, but realistically, people are willing to do what they're interested. Kim was interested in, in the strategic planning and that, and she was willing to do that. People do what they're comfortable doing and won't do what they're uncomfortable doing or don't have the time to do. I don't know how to make it less intimidating. I mean, we haven't been successful in connection. But what we are successful at doing to collegiate group work together, I don't think this stuff is unpleasant. I just, I, I don't know what the problem is. I don't know how to fix it because I don't know what's broke about it.
It's been a problem since forever. It seems like it's always, the same people are always doing the same things. And that's, that's just, it's the nature of board work.
Would it be worthwhile for me or somebody to reach out to people who, who joined and quit, joined and quit, joined and quit, or you remember, well, they're just saying, you know, what's their name? Uh, no judgment, just, you know, is, is there something we could have done differently?
I don't know who should be making that contact. I just don't know who's, like, I, I don't know the dynamics. I, I don't understand the dynamics. Which is not suggesting that you would be intimidating or whatever. I just, I just don't.
No, I think, I think I'm probably not the right person to start a charity.
No, but, but, yeah, I.
All right.
Yeah. The worst thing you can do is commit something. And if these people feel that you can't do that, how can you drop it?
You know, I, yeah.
That's just my own. And I, I don't know why, you know, but it just seems like people say, oh, that looks like, that looks like I can do that. You know, I think you're gonna have a lot more interest in the trivia thing. That's like a lot of fun. If you get interested in that, that kind of sounds like more fun than maybe something else.
Like Paul's.
Well, Paul said you're joining.
I'm a lecturer. Minus how organizations organize themselves, how do organizations address risk? How do you let people know what the standards are? That's gonna be of interest to some people, but it's a peculiar little group. It's not like everyone, oh, risk manager.
Our molestation policy in the library.
I'm against it.
Really though, that would probably be.
Thank you for adding another way to label this.
Um, we are, yes. So far Cheryl and Vicki were the ones who finished. And myself. Oh, and Rebecca. It's one of those.
And I think that's a pretty boilerplate policy. It's all two to get, I mean, like state provides policy that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We have, we have all that.
Also on the annual appeal letter, if for some reason Noe and his wife aren't interested, Rebecca's probably a candidate too, because she, she's had kids that were involved here. She does story time. She was a board member. She's an employee. She's definitely, she's a.
She's got a huge history.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good thought. So it's our next year. Yeah, yeah. If I had looked at the websites.
Yeah, I noticed, I noticed that.
No, no, our website. Okay, sorry. We, we still, we're almost at nine o'clock. Anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I move to adjourn.
Scott's moving. Three seconds. Not reading. I learned this prior to our meeting. That's all you need is motion for the adjourning. Just a motion and a second.
You don't need to vote on me?
Apparently not. I don't know. That's, that's what I was told.
If, if you don't, if you.